Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:30, and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. We begin our meetings with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and online. Members of the public may attend in person or watch this meeting online at burnsvillemn.gov/meetings, or Comcast Channel 16, or 859. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. More information is available on our meeting's webpage and in the council agenda packet. The next item on the agenda is announcements and presentations. All of our announcements have to do with all of our upcoming meetings. Regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, September 19th, at 5:30 p.m. Tuesday, October 3rd, at 5:30 p.m. We have a work session that's scheduled for Tuesday, September 12th, at 5:30 p.m. We have a governance meeting for participatory budget and the council's dialogue portion of the governance, and that's tonight at 6 o'clock. And we have a special work session for budget, and that's Tuesday, September 12th, at 6:30 The next item is citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council on an item that is not on the printed agenda and not in application form that will be coming before us at a future date. And I see that Mr. Brian Wolfe has signed up to speak. Mr. Wolfe, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you, council. Good evening, Mayor. I appreciate you letting me speak a little bit here tonight. My name is Brian Wolfe. As you noted, I'm a resident at 2704 Woods Trail South, kind of over behind Buck Hill and near Killard Park, that area. I've been a resident of Burnsville for about 35 years, so quite a while. And I know some of you, and you may remember me. It's been a while. There are also new faces on the council, so I'll tell you why I'm here tonight and then give you just a little bit of background for those who don't know me. I've come to speak just briefly about three different items if I can. I would like to voice some thoughts on a decision that was made on the 22nd regarding a petting zoo. I understand that decision is done, that's passed, and I'm not asking you to rescind that, and I know that you won't. But precedent was set, and I'd like to say something about that tonight. I'd also like to discuss just very briefly, or maybe get your thoughts, on how that decision was reached. And then finally, I would like to take a moment to talk just briefly about what I thought of a statement that was made at the end of the August 22nd meeting. And I'll try to be brief as I can. A little bit about my background. I've been interested in animal welfare for about a part of 50 years. My first introduction to local government, my first city council meeting I ever attended, was to debate the use of leg-hole traps in Bloomington. So it goes back at least that far. I think I come by my interest in animal welfare naturally. My father was a veterinarian. I had many, many opportunities to interact with animals through his work and the things that he did. I pursued an education, interest in wildlife. I went to the University of Minnesota Duluth. I earned a bachelor's degree in biology and a master's degree in environmental biology. And then I went to the University of Minnesota and earned a PhD in conservation biology. And in all of those, my main focus was on mammals, especially large mammals. I have some background as an animal rehabilitator. I spent several years in doing that. I worked particularly with crows, raccoon, red fox, and whitetail deer, so I'm familiar with all of those species. My work history includes veterinary medicine for a couple of decades, and I've been a college educator for a couple of decades at the University of Minnesota and Normandale Community College. And in both of those occupations, I also was very commonly engaged in animal welfare I'm published, for what it's worth, in various professional journals in ecology, conservation biology, and also in ethics. And I think my publications have been cited, last time I checked, about 4,000 times in other professional publications. So that's my background, and I hope it suggests that I speak as a bit of an expert on animals and animal welfare. Jumping to the decision made on the 22nd regarding the petting zoo, I want to state right up front that I do not object to petting zoos. They're well-run, for the most part, and I think that they serve an important and valuable purpose. I think Councilmember Keeley, it was interesting, Councilmember Keeley brought up Mutual of Omaha's Wild Kingdom, and I think that was in conjunction with the value of getting some exposure to animals. You saw that on TV, and from that, you got a better feel for the lives of wild animals. I think young people, especially children, if you want them to grow up and be compassionate to wild animals, they have to have experiences with animals. The only experience an individual ever gets with animals is picking up meat at the supermarket that's wrapped in plastic. I think you get very cold-hearted citizenry. And so I think that that interaction that takes place at a petting zoo can be a very positive thing, because you look into the eyes, or a child looks into the eyes of another animal, and it sees something there, and sees that that other animal has apparent thoughts, reactions, et cetera. So to cut that short, I don't have a problem with petting zoos, per se. I would maybe point out, Councilmember Keeley, just that when you mentioned Mutual of Omaha's Wild Kingdom, I flashed back to those days, and I couldn't help but think about another video at the time, or movie, Born Free, which I think had every bit the impact that Mutual of Omaha had. And the idea there was that wild animals can suffer when they're in captivity. That isn't the greatest place for them. And so that takes me to my real point here. My problem isn't with petting zoos and the use of domesticated animals. I don't think a goat or a pot-bellied pig feels much stress or is bothered when it is petted by a child, fed by a child, et cetera. But my experience with wild animals is a little different. And so for any future decisions that might run along the same lines of the August 22nd decision, and I apologize that I wasn't here, I've been out of the country part of the time and wasn't able to make that meeting, but for future consideration, it does trouble me when wild animals are placed in a petting zoo. And it does so for a couple of reasons. One, wild animals are not domesticated animals. They have not had the same evolutionary background, and they're much more likely to undergo stress and have problems. And the other thing is that I checked with the city administration to see in the application, it said that the animals that were going to be exhibited would be listed. It did not say the ages. I asked if there was anything in there about the ages. And the reason I asked is that my experience with petting zoos, and I have no experience with Mr. Pills, so I can't speak to his operation, but my experience with petting zoos is that they tend to use what we could call baby animals. Baby animals have big eyes, small noses, they're cute, and they are also easy to handle. They don't generally bite and so forth. When the animals get older, wild animals in particular have biological drives and a biological imperative that, when frustrated, can make them a little more surly and a little more difficult to handle. So they're often not the ones that are exhibited. It's the babies. The problem with the exhibition of babies is if you're going to bring in new babies every year, you're creating a mill that's producing animals that in another year or two aren't going to be at the petting zoo. What happens to those animals? You can't have three new baby raccoons every year at your petting zoo without piling up a lot of animals that are going to have to be taken care of later in life. And often, they are destroyed, and too often, they enter what I would call a dark market. And I don't think this is the appropriate place, and I don't think I have the appropriate time to tell you what goes on with the trade of wild animals. I'll leave it to you. If you're interested enough to follow up, look for yourself, but it can be quite horrific. And so I think in any future instance where a similar applicant might come along, it would be important to ask about the animals and what is going to be done with young animals in particular. With respect to how the decision was made, I did watch the video of your August 22nd meeting, and I thought it was implied at times that there really wasn't much choice in making that decision. And I agree with that once you amended the PUD. I thought that it looked like Mr. Pills had put together a complete application, he had answered your questions, et cetera, and it would have been unfair, I think, to not have granted him the permit once you amended the PUD. But I don't think you ever had to amend that, and if you want to comment on that when I'm done, I'd be happy to hear that. But it seemed to me like you had a great deal of freedom there to decide whether or not that PUD should be amended to include a zoo. It wasn't included initially. So I didn't feel it was quite honest to indicate that there was really not much choice, that you were just following city ordinances. And finally, I get to the last item, and I have to admit, that's probably what brought me in here more than anything else, is I just could not let it go. It was stated near the end of the 8/22 council meeting that the individuals who had come to protest against the application and the permitting had come to the wrong place if they were looking for morality. If you're looking for morality, this is not the place to come. We're all educated individuals. Your history knowledge is probably as good as mine, but I think we all know what happens in government when people start saying, "I'm just doing my job, I'm just following my orders, I'm just following the law," et cetera. You cannot divorce government from morality and ethics. And so I found that comment disconcerting. I would like to think that everybody sitting with you, Mayor, believes that if an organism is sentient, if it's capable of feeling pain and suffering, we, you, all of us, have a moral obligation to minimize that to the greatest extent possible. Now, there are always conflicting interests, and so minimizing that with respect to one organism might mean that you do just exactly what you did. But to suggest that you don't consider it, that's problematic. And I did email Councilmember Schultz, because I didn't want her to feel blindsided by what I was going to say tonight. And I am virtually certain that what I think I heard and what I think she said is not what she meant to say. And I would like to give her the opportunity to clarify if she would like to do so. And that's the summation of what I have to say tonight. And again, thank you for letting me talk.
Do you, Councilmember Schultz, do you want to respond? Because I think that's what Mr. Wolfe...
Of course, of course. No.
...the compelling reason.
Yes.
And then I will also address the other parts of his comments. Please.
So first of all, thank you for coming in. Anytime residents say, even whether it's something positive or negative, "This caused me to want to come in and participate," that makes me happy. Like, I want to encourage that. I never want to discourage people from coming in and speaking, so thank you for that. I probably take a dimmer view of zoos and petting zoos than you do on that. And maybe my comment is different from what you think, or maybe it is not, but I will give a little more clarity on that, and I appreciate that you asked me that. When I say that, it's because, at its best, at its best, government as an organization is fair and amoral. And when it's at its worst, it is driving a specific morality, and it's being very So when we have applicants that are in front of us, we're evaluating things on as objective of a standard as we can, as standard as we can, and as fairly as we can, which means we're not going to, we're not going to bring a lot of our personal morality in. That's something we need to kind of check, because we're supposed to be looking at standards, being more objective, treating people, the same applicants, the same, that's what we're supposed to be doing, in my view. That's how I view it. Do we, as individuals, and do individuals within government, and do individual residents try to do their best to blunt injustices? Absolutely. And we should do that as individuals. But as an organization, government has very little to do with morality. I think it is, I think it is a fairy tale that we tell ourselves, and it's an aspirational thing that government equals morality, and it doesn't. It, just by how it's structured, it will fall horrifically short almost every single time. And so when I see people come in, and I like them to participate, and I liked a lot of what they had to say, and this is on many different topics, and they are advocating very strongly from deeply-held beliefs, and they have a strong sense of morality that they are fighting for, I think two things. Good for you, like, please keep doing that. And also, like, you are, most of the time, you are going to beat your head against a wall. Like, that is how it is systemically set up. That may be, some people may consider that a cynical view. I consider it a realistic view. We all try to do what we can within a system that is just not set up to be all that great. Now, do I think democracy is horrible? Yeah, democracy is horrible, but it's, you know, like the old joke, it's better than everything else out there, right? It's slightly less horrible. So that is my view on that. Does it mean that I think we're slaves to it? Does it mean that I think, nope, hands are tied, all that? I don't think that. And when you say that people have a choice, absolutely. Every person here has a choice. Every resident has a choice. Every one of our staff persons has a choice, and as individuals, you can exercise that choice. I absolutely believe that, and I advocate for that as well. But if your responsibility is to be as dispassionate and as fair as possible, that's where it has to sit sometimes. Does that answer your question, or does that not answer your question? Because I do want to make sure that you did get your question answered on that.
Yes, it answered my question. And I just thought the only response I would have to that is, when you act with fairness, that is a moral principle. I didn't say that you necessarily acted inappropriately or incorrectly, but if I come to the city council, fairness might be one of the things I expect, because I do expect you to act ethically. Acting ethically as a council member is to act fairly, right? That is one of them. So yes, you answered my question. I think we might differ just a little bit. You might not quite have understood what it was I was asking or saying. I would, if I just took you literally of what you said, I don't think I could come expect here and be, expect to be treated fairly. If I'd have taken just what you had said just literally. If you came to government for morality, you came to the wrong place. If I took that just literally, like I say, I'm not even sure I could expect fairness from the council. So I think that part of it is a misunderstanding of both ways. And I do appreciate your answer.
Absolutely.
And I do think, I never did say that you acted unethically. I just thought that statement needed to be clarified.
Absolutely. I felt bad because they were advocating so passionately, and they were saying, "Make your decision based on this moral principle." Like, this is the moral principle we're looking for. So when I was telling them that, I'm like, I'm sorry, but if that's what you're looking for, this is not the system that can really do that. There's other areas, like the advocacy that they do, all of those types of things. Like, that absolutely is the venues that they can do and push forward for those types of things. We're just a really bad venue for that.
Mr. Wolfe?
You're in a difficult position. I'll end it with this. You're in a difficult position because you have to weigh competing interests, which is what I said. And so you don't necessarily have to agree with them.
Yeah. I would ask that the two of you, if you want to continue that discussion, to do more of that, because we do have a lot of work to do. But I also want you to know that we appreciate the suggestions that you brought this evening. One of the things, and I think you know this, because if I remember correctly, did we not appoint you the Parks and Natural Resources Commission?
We did. Yes, I served for two years.
So, because I remember all of that, and I remember your background and all of that. And we work. We are at the legislature's, how can I say this? The law prohibits us from doing certain things. So the law says that for us, our responsibility is zoning, ordinance, and code, and public safety, and Parks and Natural Resources, and economic development, but we have to have some things pretty much in place. And you talked about the PUD. When we adopted the Center Village Plan, mixed use was included in that. So for us, we needed to address those issues from the zoning and all of that. And to Councilmember Schultz's point, all of us have compassion up here. You know that Burnsville was the first in Dakota County and maybe in a lot of the areas in our state that had a dog park and all of those things. And we do things in a very thoughtful way. And most everybody sitting up here have pets, and we're a pet-friendly city. And so there is compassion and concern, but then there is the law. And we are held to account with all of that. And all of us have great respect, because there's only one thing hanging in this room, and those are our values, and that we have respect for the people who come before us, because we value their voice. We value you coming in tonight. We also want to make sure that we're good stewards of the public's trust, and we also want to make sure that we are ethical in the way that we do our business. So when people come before us, they know that we will do the right thing in accordance with the law, because we are subject to the law and are creatures of the legislature. So to Councilmember Schultz's point, if they want some things to change, because all of the permits and the governing of that particular function is that, is that the Department of Health, Department of Natural Resources, Department of Agriculture, and one other.
And there was federal.
And then the, oh, and then the federal. So if they want some things changed, that's where the change takes place, at the legislature and at the federal level. On our level, we're a creature of the legislature, and we are bound by those laws that restricts us.
You have given me my fair share of time and more. I would just end by thanking you, and I want to make it clear that I did not mean to impugn your morality. I wanted to clarify what was said, and I thought that maybe some things were missed in the discussion of petting zoos, and I've had a chance to say that.
Well, this is really great.
And anything else I may have to say, I will wait till you're finished and then maybe talk to you separately.
Well, this is great to have you come in, because it helps us all to be educated and to be better.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person who wishes to speak at citizens' comments is Mr. Young. Mr. Young, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record.
My name's John Young. 16275 Hudson Avenue, Lakeville, Minnesota. Grew up in Burnsville, graduated Burnsville High School. Was in Burnsville High School choir also, 1971. I'd like to share, my sister saw an article in the newspaper about the billboard topic, and I'd like to share some of our concerns and clarify some communication from the family. We are not objecting to our PUD contract responsibilities. We are not asking for anything, or complaining. But time for us is just not available for a delay for our legal commitments. We have a letter from the city that clearly states, at Burnsville Marketplace, by November 1st, 56 days from now, those two billboards need to come down completely. So we asked the shopping center owner to, my mom had those retained on easement, the shopping center owner, to delay the demolition, but at this point, if the demolition isn't put back on immediately, we're not going to be able to do it by November 1st. So there's that. That's an issue for us.
Yeah. And if we need to continue it, he will bring it forward. Don't worry about that.
Okay. Yeah, that's been -- the Highway 13 billboard. Now, that's in another entity that up there is the Gene Young Trust. This is the Young Family Partnership.
Yeah. I thought you might go in that direction.
Yeah. That was the sale and removal. There's some clarification there with the history. We have a contract with Clear Channel for removal of the billboard. Now, Clear Channel rejected the purchase. Out Front rejected the purchase. Supreme Outdoor rejected the purchase. I rejected the purpose. I own two other billboards elsewhere. And a family member rejected the purpose. There's five rejection, and nobody wants to buy it. So, I heard the possibility of preserving that sign. Well, the history is, 35 years ago, the city required -- it's in a road easement. My father actually laid all that easement out, and he had an agreement with the Happies that he released on their side, and he had a handshake agreement on his side.
Yep.
Yeah. But when you required the emergency exit, the handshake went out the window, and a lawsuit happened. So, the neighbor who just purchased all the property around us wants to expand. All the -- the neighbor has control. You don't have control over this. You don't have to require emergency exit any longer. The neighbor has it in lawsuit, which I'm going to give a copy to the staff, some of the documents I have with, after I'm done speaking. And so, once you issue the permit, the neighbor has the right to order us, us, to pay for and remove the sign. And so --
So, Mr. --
And he's planning to expand soon.
Yeah. Your concern is that we changed the ordinance, and you already have an agreement with Clear Channel. They were going to purchase that from you.
Yeah, we're like right --
And so, now with the change in the ordinance, because but for the ordinance that we had previously, you had an agreement with Clear Channel.
That you just --
Now, Clear Channel can come back and say, "No ordinance that tells us that we need to pay you for that."
Yeah. Clear Channel just worked to change the ordinance July 18th. And I worked with Out Front for a year. Then I worked with Clear Channel for a year, and now it's been after -- more than that, our attorney negotiated for 10 months. And --
Yeah. And then we mucked it up when we changed.
And then Clear Channel got the ordinance changed, and then we were right here at the finish line, ready to close. We're not selling them the billboard. We're selling them the rights to remove the billboard. So, I just wanted to give you that.
Yeah. And I think, you know, perhaps what we should have done is to have all of the owners come back and really look at that ordinance before we changed it, because now Mr. Young is harmed on the 13th, on a Highway 13 property, because Clear Channel is saying, "Well, the ordinance doesn't exist anymore, and we don't have to pay you."
Right. That's correct. And, yeah, we've got a lot of --
I'm so sorry.
We've got a lot of -- it was difficult with my mom, with the Alzheimer's.
Yeah.
It did not -- it went very bad.
Yeah.
And then, since then, the estate issues have been an unbelievable amount of paperwork. And this is --
Yeah.
I -- when I read in the newspaper, I immediately called an appraiser, because now -- and this doesn't matter to you guys, but now what we set for values are all changing. We have to be -- we're accountable to the IRS for estate settlement. So, anyway, it's been a difficult process for us. Thank you for your time.
Yeah. Councilmember Keely, you had a -- yeah. Don't worry about the PUD on Burnsville Marketplace.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Thompson will work with you. And if we have to extend it, we can do that.
Okay.
It's within our authority to do that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Keely.
I just wanted to point out, the reason that I brought this issue up is I wanted government to get out of the way of the private sector. The attack on billboards over the last 20-plus years is, in my opinion, a detriment to the business community. And although I -- you know, we're not privy to private contracts and such, per se, red into them to that level of degree, but getting government out of the way, in my opinion, is much better than government forcing people to do transactions to be able to get something else. And that's what we stopped.
Well, but that was made with all of those people. When we made that ordinance, all of these folks were part of making that decision back then.
I get it. But now the billboard that was going to come down can continue to collect revenue. I mean, it's up to the private sector. You can have it taken down. You can sell it. You can continue to get revenue off of it. Whatever you want to do. We're not dictating the rules by which the private sector has to play by, which is what has been going on to get rid of billboards all this time.
Well, I was surprised on how astute you were on the subject matter. My father was the promoter. We have not promoted billboards in Burnsville for over 40 years. But they bring people in for commerce free to your community, and the small billboard companies are the affordable for directional advertising to your local business. But again, I'm not in the billboard promoting business. But you seem to have figured that out when I heard your comments, which I was surprised. You know, the -- most communities don't have that. Lakeville has them all set to come down with development down there. And those are the small billboard companies. One company owns, I don't know, like 95% or more.
Yeah.
It's a monopoly, and they --
No. But we -- I can tell you, I hear you when you're saying your concern is that you had an agreement with Clear Channel.
Yeah.
And now, with the ordinance being amended, now Clear Channel can say, "Mr. Young, but for that ordinance, we don't have a deal anymore, because the ordinance doesn't exist."
Yeah. And the PUD. I appreciate your sensitivity to covering, helping us with that.
Yeah. We can work with you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Okay. The next item is additions to the final agenda, and this is for emergency items only. City Manager Lindberg, any emergency items?
Nothing from staff. Mayor.
Okay. Members of the council, anybody has an emergency item? Okay. Very good. And the next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item in a consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Anyone online, Mrs. Collins?
Anyone online?
Okay. City Manager Lindberg.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I do have an item that I would like to remove tonight. Item 4I is approval of a joint powers agreement for Habitat Restoration Project at Alum Magnet. I have some questions about this item for staff. Our team hasn't had time to answer those questions, and I would like to ask you for a motion to continue the item, to allow me to get those answers and get the item back in front of you for your consideration.
May I have a motion to continue 4I?
So moved. Second.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries.
Thank you.
And now, members of the council, does anyone want an item to be pulled for a separate discussion and vote? May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. We're at the regular agenda, and the first item is a public hearing. And this is to approve on-sale brewers' taproom, on-sale Sunday, and off-sale brewers' license for Trow Brewing LLC, doing business as Trow Brewing, 1719 County Road, 42 West. Mrs. Collins is presenting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did get an application from Trow Brewing. This is for on-sale and off-sale brewers' taproom. This is in the former Kings Chinese Buffet location next to LA Fitness. The police department has conducted a background investigation on all the principles involved, and nothing was found to deny the application. License issuance will be contingent upon the certificate of occupancy and payment of any outstanding license fees. City Code does require a public hearing for all new liquor license applications. I stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mrs. Collins? Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Mrs. Collins, anyone online?
No one online.
I will now close the public hearing. Members of the council, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. The next item is also a public hearing, and this is to approve an off-sale intoxicating liquor license for Willer Liquor LLC, doing business as MGM Wine and Spirits at 3050 Highway 13 West. Mrs. Michelle Collins, House City Clerk, is presenting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Willer Liquor has submitted an application. This is for a change in ownership of the MGM there on Highway 13. Background investigation has been conducted on the principles involved, and nothing was found to deny the application. License issuance is contingent upon payment of any outstanding license fees. City Code requires a public hearing for all new liquor license. So, I stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mrs. Collins? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone online?
No one online.
I will then close the public hearing. Members of the council, your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. Members of the council, there are no other items to come before us this evening, and a motion to adjourn is the order.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. Good night, and thank you for being with us.